Okay, calls of order is it six oh three, let's call it.
Okay.
Period of public expression. First of all, congratulations to Lisa and I didn't. And thanks for coming. That's what a few of us can say. It's very important. Now you get into the groove the next couple of months. Iron to the fire. So anybody have anything to say?
Chance to talk. Just delighted to be here, Solomon.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did you tell them about the check, the dues?
No, I don't.
No, I got away to their first meeting, then I came to it out.
I just want to remind everyone that we're reporting either on our website.
Okay, we have two set of minutes to approve the budget hearing candidate forum minutes. And the regular meeting minutes from September 20. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Are we gonna, we're gonna do that?
Yeah, well, we'll do both, okay?
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. All four? All right, yep. Against? Motion passes? Okay, Kelly with the report from the Friends of the Library.
So I, I missed the last Friends of the Library meeting because I was at Comic Con. But the Friends, I did talk to Toby this morning. They had a very successful bus trip into the city in conjunction with the church. They filled the bus, they had a great time, it was wonderful. They are now looking forward to the author event, which is going to be the cocktail party, the first Saturday in December, which will be up in the rotunda. I will be doing the temporary beer wine and cider permit for them. I believe they're only serving wine, but some of your wine and cider permit nonetheless. And they adopted a new logo, which is, they used to have a green logo. I had asked them at a previous meeting if they would consider having a logo which fit with the rebranding that John Germain did a couple of years back. So they have, they have a new logo which has the same colors and same feel and style of art, but it's still very clearly the Friends. And that's, that's really where the Friends are at.
Okay. Very good. Elliot Trish's report.
Okay, now we're starting here on page.
Where are the page numbers left? I swear.
Five or six pages in, you'll see the first page of the internal report. It's a little bit complicated this month because it's a combination of third quarter and the month September. The general statement is that we're in good shape, we're in good shape for the end of the third quarter. And it looks like we're positioned well for the end of the fiscal year. So let's look at some more of the details on the part one statement of financial position, which we typically start with. As you can see, if you look at this chart here, on the left, you've got our current, well, current at the end of September financial balance. And then I'm giving you two years for comparison. So you'll see we are somewhat ahead of where we were last year at the end of the third quarter and substantially ahead of where we were two years ago at the end of the third quarter. So that's all good. Just remind you that it's, this is as good as it gets and we're going to be going downwards now for the next 12 to 16 months with all of the improvements that we're making in the building. But very, very good, healthy cash position now. Mortgage balance is down as typically from a year before. So as I say, this is a combination of September and the third quarter. The September activity is never very interesting, it's never profitable. And true into this, this year is no different from any other year. Our expenses have been growing steadily in the three years, as you can see them compared here. The revenue has risen pretty dramatically if you're looking at a single month basis since the T bill investments kicked in. So you'll notice there that while we only had less than $3,000 in, in revenue in September of 21, we had almost 20,000 in September of 23. It's not entirely the T bills, but it's the bulk of it's there. And again, if you look at expenses for the month, they weren't dramatically different from last year, pretty much inflation and, you know, the increase in costs. A significant increase over two years ago, but again, we've had significant growing increases in costs. When you look at the net position, we actually had a, a little bit nicer net for September than we did a year ago, although not nearly as nice as it was in 2021. But again, this is totally all predictable. So that's pretty straightforward. It's when we look at that more detailed chart of the budget versus the actuals that I think we noticed some interesting trends. We're looking at year to date and comparing year to date in the two previous year. I think especially since we had such increased activity costs. I mean, the library is much busier since COVID, we have more staff, we have more, paying more benefits, et cetera, et cetera. So on a three-year basis, we definitely are spending more money. And yeah, we're staying pretty close to the budget, 76% is excellent, you know, set three quarters, 75%. So that's very good. We're very close to budget. And there's a chance that we'll actually stay under budget for the year. It's possible. If we do, it won't be by much. And it won't be like the last couple of years, and it certainly won't be like the years before that. Now, like if you look in this case at that expense, expense line, you'll see that a year ago, we'd only spent 69% of our budget, and two years ago, only 66% of our budget. But again, our expenses were lower and frankly, we were squirreling money. We were able to come out under budget in those two years and more so even in some of the previous years. So the, what, what's going to become the challenge for us is for us to meet these increasing levels of expense in the, in the current environment, where the current, you know, having higher expenses. And we have somewhat higher revenue, of course, we always have slightly higher revenue from the village. And then if we can continue to develop this stream of financial income to offset, you know, making money by not spending it, but rather focus on making money by injecting the money better, so it's working more for us.
But we won't have the capital expenditures that we had this year.
Well. Now, though, my understanding is Kelly and I have to really dig into the details next month because we have to make sure it's all correct. But up till now, basically, we're only treating as within the budget, the repair and maintenance work we did this year. Not the glow up.
No, the glow, and we really haven't paid for anything in the glow up yet. Because we haven't paid.
But the repair and maintenance were significant.
The rate, the repair and maintenance is significant, but certain things fall outside of the operating budget because they're capital repairs. So things related to the HVAC remediation, the cleaning of the wells, the compressors that we had to replace, which were as a result of the HVAC not performing properly. We stressed out our compressors. All of that is capital, so it doesn't show up as part of operating.
Okay. Yeah, so that's why I'm saying, I think it's possible we will stay within the budget this year. But we will be seeing a big drop in our total capital because we're spending money out of our capital reserve for all these things. And you know, like I said, we have to be careful to make sure that we've got all the expenses shown in the right year. There's gonna be, you know, there may be some expenses that, that snuck in this year that I'll have to get added to next year's budget when we do the audit and if we miss something.
And so that's something that, that Al does for us. He does the adjusting journal entries.
Yeah.
By way of, just as a reminder, historically, because Elliot touched upon that. In 2022, we were at 69%, in 2021, we were at 66%. I did want to mention that I believe we were understaffed in both those cases where we were not paying a full-time person. So that's why we were under budget. And then also 2021 was still very much a COVID year. So.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that, you know, we'll probably be moving away from looking at it in this way fairly soon, focusing on more day-to-day stuff. Because at this point, the trend is very clear. And as we pull out of COVID, you know, and get to a more regularized level of staffing and expenses and stuff like that, we just have to track that month to month. And we'll look much more at what we spent like last month or last year, rather than what we spent three, three years ago, which is going to be very different.
I like this presentation, Elliot. It's a good edition.
Yeah, it's excellent.
Are there any other questions that anybody has about any of this? Just the things that you need to approve. I mean, the report as a whole, but on the, the bills and applied payments, those are all went overall, as always. Part five, the bill payment list. You know, this is another interesting thing about the strength of September this year, that $48,000 is not a whole lot to have in a warrant. Sometimes we have much more than that in terms of outstanding checks. So that's good.
I do, I do. I do want to mention, because I left them there for Bill to sign and for you to sign. We finally got health insurance, which blew out $32,000. And then also the credit card statements. And so there are a couple of whoppers in that.
So good. All right, Elliot, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
On the budgets versus actual pages, did we take out the percentages? But you used to say like percentage.
We did.
I only took out, we only did the percentage last time and I took it out.
I like the percentage.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah. Back to them.
The notes in my thing that said, take the percentage of that, but I'm happy to put them back in.
Please.
Cause we're, we're at the, so 10 out of 12, right? Or 9 out of 12? So we would be at the 75%.
75, yeah. I'm saying overall, we were at 76.
Right.
And I'm sure there were some individual accounts where we were way old.
Oh, no, I'm sure. I just like that.
It summarizes things. So we put operations in the, those numbers.
But then you guys like to point out like when we've spent 450% of something.
Yeah, but that's only like $2 last year and $5 this year, right?
Oh, so you're getting back to this.
I am, but I can't see the percent.
Are you gonna have to get a larger printer now to get that column in?
We're just gonna.
And then we have the payroll details. It's slightly lower if anybody picks up on that. And that's because we have, we use less part-time hours. Like typically recently, we've been showing 22 employees, not only first full time. But anyway, that's the only reason for that being a little bit lower than usual.
Well, Bill, you want me? Okay, no questions?
I'll report that later. Really, really, really. I like the analysis. Very, very. State of the Union is good.
So if we could have a motion to approve the financial reports and the payroll warrants. One fell swoop, swoop.
I, so move.
I'll second it.
All four?
All right.
I, against. Motion passes. Now we're on to the director's review.
So if you want to go ahead and count all the way to that's funny, some of the page, some of my pages have, oh no, that's. So if you count all the way to page 39, we'll get to my report. And so as you all know, the library's annual vote, trust the election was successful with the budget passing by a large margin, two new trustees, Megan and Lisa, were elected. And I worked the circulation desk for most of that day. That was fun. Everybody just got free books. My library card, sure. And it was just, it was a great way to talk about the glow up and have the opportunity to remind people all of the things that we were going to do.
Wait a minute, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Since you're on that. Is there any way to make, expand the election hours or whatever? Because I, I, I just, I couldn't get there.
They voted. They voted.
I posted, I was on who posted. I didn't think they should have been.
In the morning or in the evening?
Either. Either, just so that, you know, because.
Do you want to go until nine? Is that?
Whichever is more convenient for the staff and other people.
So the reason we rung the hours was to reduce costs in terms of full workers. But also when we looked at the numbers and who was voting in the morning, it was only the library staff. So when we were open, like we used to be open, the polls 10 to eight. But the only people who voted between like 10 and like 1 o'clock were like library staff members. So they could certainly vote at 2 o'clock. And the reason for doing it is if the goal is to have it open so people could vote before work, like people are already working at 10 o'clock.
Yeah, 10 o'clock, yeah. But I mean, you got the other.
At the upfront, we can certainly stay until nine.
I'm like there, like the first one, you know, just to get in and out. So this way.
I mean, we can certainly look at sending it to nine.
But if you want to extend to a little bit later or something.
How long did it go?
It went until eight.
Later, getting later or not later?
Earlier, but, but I mean, that's too early for everybody else. I mean, you know, if it was, what are they, in, in the school, I think it's a little bit. I think it's even earlier than that.
You don't know what I'm voting for.
Yeah.
You can vote it. You can vote by absentee.
I can. And I, listen, we can save the expendable vote by absentee next year. You're, you're right. You're right. But it was just a.
Yeah.
My, my apologies for interrupting like that.
That's okay. So the renovation is moving along. After the board meeting, we'll take a tour and talk about all the things that are still left to do, but we're really coming together. We were hoping to open soft, but we're going to need a little bit more time in terms of getting the books back on the shelves. But we are using this program room for programs. So as you can see, we're meeting today. In here, we have our great give back program, which is on Saturday. And they're going to meet in here and have access to this room and the restrooms. And the park is going to meet here on Monday.
It's on board, it's a.
A little committee. And then possibly the chamber. So we're, we're slowly but surely getting people back in the building. And what might end up happening is we let people in on the, you know, into the adult section, but not necessarily the children's section. So we really just need to see how far along they get with the rest of the furniture. But we have some things that need to be bolted to the wall and that's not going to be done until about the middle of next week. But we will definitely be open for the Halloween party, the after-hours Halloween party on the 27th. We've done lots of other stuff and we're, we're just, we're plugging along. So Eileen, I did want to mention, is really just living her best social media life. We do lots of TikToks, we do, which get posted not only to TikTok, but to Facebook and Instagram. She did a time lapse video, which is on our YouTube. The goal is to get that actually the links onto the website, it just, so people sort of can see what they're doing and they just go straight to the website. We have the plaque ordered for the wall. If you remember, the Friends asked if we could put Gloria's name up on the wall so that it would be the Gloria Cren Brown Friends Community Room. So that is in production now. And we're just, everybody's taking all of the chaos in stride. So thank you very much, the staff. Several of us went to Comic Con on Thursday and Friday. We ran, some of us even ran into Dan at Comic Con. And we got our New York Public Library library cards and went to some really great panel conversations on book representation and books, on book bands and challenges and how to combat that and, and some other things too. So it was really, it was a nice day for some of us who have been very much in a, in the building project to just get out and do some library things. So we were excited to do that. I did also want to mention that Liz, our teen librarian, attended Pearson School Curriculum Night to promote, promote the library. And in September, I just think this is the coolest program ever, similar to 1,000 books before kindergarten. She has introduced 100 books before graduation. 10 teens are currently registered and we are very excited for that program. So the goal is for teens to read 100 books before graduation. And then I attended a bunch of meetings.
Just want to ask you about the public feedback, probably negative that were closed.
It's been pretty good, I will say. So we, we had a couple of people who just, you know, were like, well, why didn't you tell me it was closed? And I was like, well, it was in the newsletter, it was on the radio, it was in the local paper. And it was like one of those things. So it was like, well, I don't get the local paper and I don't listen to W L N G. And I'm not on social media and I didn't read the newsletter. And I was like, I'm telling you now? But then she was like, all right, I get it. You tried. She was like, you could have texted me.
Library.
So, so that was fun. So there, there were just a couple of people who, and like the fun part is that some of them are people who come into the library every day. And I know that we told them, I know we put books in book. But generally speaking, everybody is really excited. We have a lot of people peering in the windows. People are excited about flooring. They're excited that we're doing stuff for teens. We've been getting a lot of positive feedback when people pick up their books saying like, I watched the videos and they're so great. So. What?
Can I come in?
Can I come in? And we're like, no. And then there's just people who sneak in behind the contract, like scooch around the cones, pass the contractors, wander upstairs. And they're like, you guys are open?
It's something different.
Oh, I was like, by the way, how did you get in? Well, I followed the guy pushing in the dolly. And I'm like, okay.
Kelly, next year, we get Paul Revere to ride through the neighborhood. The library is closed.
But we have had a couple of opportunities where I will say, we've had some like small kids who have like come and they're like, oh, and I, well, it, it's quiet. I have said, why don't you come in and take a look, you know, like here's the flooring. And so we have been doing like little, little like, and to get the kids excited when they're peering in the windows. So it's, it's going well, but I think the staff and, and myself are really ready to like put the library back together.
Kelly, can we make a presentation or have Miss Malone say something at morning program?
Can I make a presentation or what?
Morning program at the elementary school. Every morning, they have an assembly.
Okay.
And maybe you and some of the staff members, you can, you know, speak with Mr. Malone over there. And that would bring a lot of interest with the kids. And you can bring a cart or something like that. Maybe have the.
Okay.
I did on the book bike.
Yes.
Right.
That'll do it.
You've got the cats to ride that book bike, you can ride it right up to that.
There's a downhill ramp.
I told somebody today, I was like, that book bike, when it's full, you're riding uphill both ways, even when you're going downhill.
But that would be really exciting for the, especially if you're trying to get, you know.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I will reach out to Mr. Malone.
Yeah.
We can send, we can send Ginta and Emily one sheet back from Europe. We'll, we'll make a little party out of it. So in terms of statistics, you know, sometimes we're up, sometimes we're down. This says July, it says August. Can you tell that I was a little preoccupied with the building stuff? So what I did do, which you didn't get in your, your packet, is right before this meeting, at least for the board members, is I did update the adult program attendance. So for, for the benefit of Lisa and Megan, we had 32 adult programs and attendance was 469, which is up from August, which is exciting. And then for that community program attendance, that was us down at Harbor West. And since we've been doing TikToks, our TikToks have been blowing up. So you'll see there's a huge increase in our, in our TikTok numbers. We're still transferring lots of data. We're looking, I think it's just its use. At this point, some of it is staff, but the majority of it is, is people are just really using our Wi-Fi. There's nobody is a super user of it, so that like 1.3 terabytes. There's no super user of it. So we're not concerned about somebody mining crypto or doing something unsavory. And that's why that, that number is huge, that data transfer number is huge. It's just.
What's your capacity?
A lot. A lot. I don't know off the top of my head, but like, yeah, we're not, we're not fearing anything, any slowness or any issues.
Have you been noticing a lot of people sitting out in the, up in the plaza down here, clothed or clothes?
Some people in the front, not as many in the front as I thought, but we do have people who still pull up tables or sit on benches down here. They'd just rather be down here than on Main Street. And I think this is just a little bit quieter.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, there's some people sitting here.
And then here's the other thing, if you really wanted to, I'm pretty sure you could sit in your car and probably pick up our Wi-Fi. So. And then one more thing I added to the board packet last minute is some correspondence. So you have a letter that says to the J J L Board of Trustees, I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for your warm reception and support during the candidate forum. It was greatly appreciated, as was the entire experience. Both deserving candidates, Lisa and Megan, are experienced and well-prepared to make significant contributions as members of the J J L Board. So continue your hard work and as Michael said, have some fun. Continue to nurture and stay true to Annalivia Sage's vision. And most of all, take care of this beautiful place. We'll see you down the road, Bob Ferrari. Bob, what's our other person?
Rachel.
And for those of you with the personnel report, you see no changes.
And we have to vote on it though.
You do.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the personnel report?
I approve the personnel report.
Second.
All four?
All right.
Against? Motion passes.
I have a good question. Do you anticipate going this decision?
Someday.
Someday.
Someday. I'm not, there's no urgency at this point. I exist in a world where one day Rachel is going to come back to me. Probably not, but.
Nice to think about.
It's nice to think about.
Kelly, can I just ask a quick question with regard to our statistics? Do you ever track what our sister libraries are doing as far as their statistics?
I do.
To see if we are in line?
We are, I do. We're, we're in line sometimes. Some places we're a little bit better, some places we're a little bit worse. Next month, we're going to be a lot worse because we've been closed for most of the month. The goal is, you know, always to do better than they do. I can say anecdotally, we have had more of our families who were hopping to other libraries coming back here more often. So. Because we're fun. Because we have great programs.
Well, can we make it more fun or?
We can make it. I'm trying to. We're going to put books back on the shelf. That should be.
But is that, is that, I'm just curious as far as the reasons are concerned, you know, between.
Um, you know, I think, I think we have a really great team. I think we're doing some really great programs and we're, we're where, that's, that's really it. You know, I think we've really, we've got something special going on. Ginta and Emily are the dynamic duo. So.
Excellent. All right, thank you. I'm just curious if you're dropping that stuff.
Okay, committee reports, personnel. Anne's not here, but I just want to go over something here. Between now and next meeting, we're going to be doing Kelly's annual evaluation. And we're going to, as soon as Anne gets back, we're going to have a meeting and and come up with any revisions to the form, which I think some of us had a lot of problems with last year. I put some work into it and Kelly and I have been on it. She's got some forms from other libraries. And I think what I mostly had a problem with was the rating system.
Yeah.
A lot of confusion. I kind of tend to, we come up with a four-tiered system instead of three. Outstanding, highly effective, effective, developing and no knowledge slash did not observe. Okay. So we're going to work on that. It's not the final thing, but it gets rid of that meets expectations, which is a little nebulous.
Yeah.
What's the expectation? So effective, I think that more, it's, it's, it's more accurate in doing something like that, that you could hang your hat on it. And then there's two steps up depending on how you rate Kelly. Developing would be the old needs improvement. And then no knowledge, did not observe, would take it totally out of the ratings. Will have no zeros and to skew it when somebody just doesn't know what she's doing is certain things, because some of us come in more than others and see things more than others. So that's kind of what I'm thinking about. That's not the end-all. And if anybody wants to give me your two cents on it, I would welcome that.
Can I just say also that with that, it's not only for us to give our input, it's important that right, whoever's receiving that, it's constructive in a way that they understand where there might be an issue or where they have excelled. You know, one way or the other.
Yeah, Kelly is gonna um, prepare a a little narrative.
I'm a wax poetic about how wonderful I am.
Yeah, of course. And that might help us. Here we look at her duties and and how she sees she's gonna do it, do it.
Yeah, I mean, because I'm sure someone in Kelly's position wants to know.
Yeah.
Something that is useful, you know, from her perspective.
Can I get mine a red pen?
You can use crayons.
So uh, I just wanted to explain that because, you know, you we're not gonna have a meeting by the time we have these evaluation forms. And so if there's any anything you want to tell me that.
So you intend to send those out before the next meeting?
Kelly is going to uh, prepare everything by what, the twenty eighth?
The tw- the twenty seventh.
Twenty seventh, right before it's a Friday?
The twenty seventh, I have so many, like I have a lot of homework assignments through that day, but yeah, by the twenty seventh. By the twenty seventh, I will have for you.
Yeah.
Of October.
Yeah, that's a Friday.
Yeah, a a summary of everything I did this year.
Uh.
Bill, I I don't, I don't wanna slow things down, but like, but for those of us that I've never been here, you know, for one of these before, what's, you know, like in a nutshell, what's the process?
Well, um, I was gonna say that.
Oh, okay.
So she's gonna send that out uh, probably through me.
So that's individually.
Yes, so you'll have that and then you you'll.
You know, we respond confidentially to, who does it go to?
Well, no, that'll be the evaluation form.
Yeah.
I will send that out. We had a tight schedule because the next meeting is the fifteenth of November.
Right.
So I will send those uh, forms out.
Yeah.
Hopefully, the first couple of days of November and ask for them back at the end of the week.
Okay.
Okay, so.
It'll come back to you.
Email, scan an email to me, or drop them off at the desk here. And that'll give you a week to tabulate them.
Okay.
Okay, and um, it's.
If don't, if you could not drop them off at the desk, put them in and seal the envelope and drop them to me.
Okay.
Um, that would be good.
All right, let's do it that way. Make sure they're sealed.
Yeah.
Sealed. Um, so you know, the questions, I think that Robin's on the committee along with me and uh, Anne. The questions are gonna be kind of the same. We may tweak them or something. Um, but what I really like, and I think is more even more important than numerical things, are the additional comments. Um, where you can free form plus, you know, her strengths and weaknesses. And then I will take that and make a narrative of it and make it part of the uh, evaluation. So that's gonna be the kind of the schedule we'll be on, including you too. No, sorry, sorry. Don't put the gun here. Um, so that's kind of the schedule. So uh, we'll meet in executive session to go over the evaluation.
Mm hmm.
Uh, Kelly will leave the room and then we'll bring her in and we're also gonna uh, decide on what kind of uh, salary increase she's gonna get.
She's gonna get an increase?
Possible increase, okay.
Kelly, what sort of things do you uh, want to see? You know, what sort of feedback or things of that nature that you wanna see in an evaluation?
Um, you know, I think.
Cause I think we're tending to look at this myopically, just from the one side of the equation.
Um, you know, I've I've had a a conversation with Phil. I think we'll talk as part of the Personnel Committee um, with regards to the evaluation last year. Um, and I believe this this is something that's going to change this year as discussed. Um, I like that I have the opportunity to provide a laundry list of all the things that I've done to remind you, you know, like what we, well, remember what we did back in January? That was the good.
That's the new thing.
Yeah, so I I really think that that's going to be helpful. And then, you know, the comments are are helpful as well. And then, of course, the other thing, because at the end of the day, I am a nerd who cares deeply about my final grade. Um, you know, not having that zero tank my average. Um, because, you know, if somebody gives me a four and no knowledge or, you know, like not something I do with the director gives me a zero, then my score is a two. And that's, yeah.
I think it's important if you have no knowledge or did not observe, if you have any question that you that might be an option, I would go with that option rather than guess.
Hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
So. So that's pretty much our plan. So we're gonna, we're we're gonna hit this. It's gonna be, you know, a busy meeting next next November. And something that Kelly found uh, is it should have been done in September, it was in her contract.
Yeah.
So, that's on me.
Wait, we're supposed to do this.
Yeah, so when we were discussing the evaluation process, I was like, well, let me see what my contract says, right? And it actually says that this process is supposed to take place in September.
I think it's even in the bylaws.
Did we do it way last year then too?
Yeah.
We did in November. I was hoping to do it in October, but Anne was away and everything. So um, let's try to do it ne- next year then. And we've only been doing this, uh, this is the third year we've been doing this because Kathy Creedon was never evaluated, you know.
That's not true.
No?
She did, we just had a discussion, you know, we had another form.
No, it wasn't a formal, I don't believe, since I've been on. And then I believe she said, guys, you know, I'm I'm gonna be retiring. I think you should get into it. I have it. So use me as a guinea pig. So when the new person comes on, you can give them a proper evaluation. I think it's just been, this this will be the third year. I have the two forms that we used. And then we tweaked last year and then we're gonna tweak them this year.
Hmm.
So that's my personnel uh,
Committee?
Report. Uh, so at LA Finance?
Oh, we didn't meet this last month.
Yeah, okay, buildings and grounds?
Buildings and grounds did not meet, but. Yeah.
Well, I.
Okay, uh, policy.
Oh, pardon.
That is your fourth report.
Yeah. Policy. Wait.
We met, we discussed the notary policy.
A while ago, right?
That's a new business.
Anne's in here, right?
Yeah, the notary uh, policy. Um, we have to vote on this, right?
Yeah, that's later, but also I did want to mention as a reminder, because I know um, I know you all remember, but as a reminder, the trustee retreat will be at Cooper Hall at Rogers Memorial Library, Cooper Hall at ten AM, from ten AM to three PM on Monday, October thirteenth.
No, no.
You two are Biden, Jacob and Lisa are invited. Hopefully you're available.
Um, then I work on Mondays.
Okay.
What time is? It's ten AM to three PM.
Okay, I'll see what.
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe we should tell everyone a board retreat.
So the board retreat is um, and this doesn't count towards next year, but um, the purpose of this board retreat is um, some some professional development for the board, but we're going to be on embarking next year on a strategic plan to sort of look at what we're gonna do for the next three years. I think five years is too far out. Um, and so we have um, Vic Caputo, who is a retired library director, um, who has consulting business, who's gonna assist us in um, the long-range planning process and the creation of a community circle.
Okay, Green brought it up. Okay, now outreach, Michael?
Um, we did not meet.
And.
We do need to meet to discuss, to discuss um, annual appeal.
Oh, ah. We have no appeal.
I mean, here's the thing, we we could also let the annual appeal go this year because we're we're getting down to the wire and do it next year.
I don't wanna do anything.
I thought we were gonna do that and pass on it this year.
We're gonna pass on it this year? Then we do not need to meet.
But. Why is it called an annual appeal if you're not doing it? I think you have to be consistent, so that's.
We didn't do one last year either. So we'll call it an appeal next year. Well, we'll basically just to give you an update, um, we went through the donor database that we had with was this very convoluted Excel spreadsheet. Um, and we have finally Nancy, Nancy did the Lord's work. Um, she updated um, took all of that and put it into Little Greenlight, which is our our donor database and updated everything and um, got it taken care of.
Encouraged our voter list and donor list.
We 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 did. We um, we've got it all in Little Greenlight now, which is great. Um, and then now we can um, you know, use that software. When it's time to do an appeal, if we want to do a box holder appeal and just mail it to mailboxes, if we want to do the targeted appeal, we have the ability to do a targeted appeal instead. And then all of like the donation letters and the thank you letters and all of those things run through that. And it just makes it a lot easier in terms of doing.
Do you feel a meeting is in order though, even if it's not on the annual appeal? Because that's one of the things we were waiting for was that
um.
The donor list. I mean, I don't want to overburden you with.
I think where we're at right now is I've gotta get the library back open.
Okay.
So we can certainly consider having a conversation in December.
Okay, because I'd like to use that list actually, but.
Yeah.
Um, all right, let's let's wait. Another month is not going to kill us.
Now that we're not doing an appeal or an annual appeal or a semi-annual appeal. Um, so.
Okay, Ms. Park.
Ms. Park. Met last Wednesday, October eleventh. And so a waiting word on the CPF funding that's gonna apply tomorrow. So the park, as I mentioned last month, did a bad new bylaws and with that it created new committees. So that's being organized and um, I am the chair of the governance committee. And we're gonna be having a meeting here using the space next Monday for our first meeting. Tree work was done at the park. Recently, a lot of dead trees and hanging limbs were taken care of. And the park is considering buying a dump truck. So they are looking at a few uh, suspected possibilities as far as dump trucks, or pickup trucks rather, are concerned. And I think that's about enough about the park. I think I've covered everything that's um, they're still discussing doing the roof on the uh, park manager's home and hopefully that will happen soon. It needs to be replaced. And that's it.
When was that CPF application?
When was it?
Posted.
Posted?
Yeah.
On a couple of months already. They, you know, they have to get, they get to appraisals. And I think there's a discrepancy between the appraisals and that's what's underlying it.
Okay. And I'll go in for the books.
Um, we still are waiting for that. Uh, that's gonna be planned on that for um, June. And we're gonna get, we'll start meeting on that and get everything set up by December.
Yeah.
Good. Okay, HeadHawk Scholarship. We didn't have a meeting, but we did get a donation in.
We did.
From our original donor.
Yeah.
And he's gonna match it in May.
Um, yes.
So.
Okay.
That's good.
So we're gonna get.
Now we have money.
Okay, yeah. So yeah, so the original, the donation check which we received um, two weeks ago, maybe, um, was ten thousand dollars, which is very exciting. Yeah.
So the total now is ten thousand, that's in the.
In the bank, yeah, that's in the funds.
Gets it starting off in a good manner. Okay, old business.
It's that, so Lizardos did not get back to me and I was busy with construction, so it split my mind to remind them to get back to me. But I can tell you that they are fifty percent through the design phase, which is good. And um, I'm going to see them Monday evening at a fundraiser, so I will remind them they they owe us a report um, to let us know how things are going. But currently, the HVA C system, knock on wood, is is functioning. Um, I think I said this at the last meeting, but the other competitor that was bad has been replaced. And um, we had an issue with a sticky actuator, but they came out and replaced that as well. So we're, we're doing okay. It helps that we're in the shoulder season, so there's not much work for the PHV to be doing.
Hmm, good.
Um, floor and staff replacement, I think we kind of covered it during um, the renovation or during the director's report, but I do want to mention that um, we're short some Sheldon. Um, but um, which we did not plan for. And so I miss, it's it's pretty much my fault. I miscounted bookshelves that we were gonna need. Um, I thought we were going to need less than we needed. So we are gonna have to put in an additional range of Sheldon. And so I've I've got a, I called Brad um, from CL Safe, but I also have a a um, message from him on my cellphone. Uh, so the company is sending us what I've called whoopsie shelves, which is um, temporary shelves, which they said are actually kind of nice and will match. They're not, you know, as beautiful as the other ones, but we'll be able to get the collection back on the shelf to open um, while they fabricate the new section of going.
How much, I mean, how many more shelves, like?
It's, you'll, well, so when we take the board, the building, we basically on the second floor, we have a low stretch of shelves. There, we're gonna have to duplicate that on the main floor. Um, so that's, that is where we're at.
And we have the space.
We have the space, yeah. Um, so we're.
And we'll go on a tour.
And we'll go on a.
We'll have a brief executive session, so if you guys would just go out for a minute and then you could join us on the tour. Wanda, I'm sure you don't want to go on the tour.
Wanda lives there.
Yeah.
So, so that's that. So if you want to talk about the nominating.
Okay, um, the nominating committee met last week, Robin, Elliot and myself. And we've come up with a slate and I'll announce it in a minute. Um, nominations are also accepted from the floor, so. Here goes our slate uh, for two thousand twenty-four is President Diane Dega, Vice President Michael Garabedian, Treasurer Elliot Stoker for another year, and Secretary Lisa Chris-Cana. So that's where we're at. Has anybody had any nominations?
To, I move to approve the slate.
Okay.
I second you.
All four?
All right.
Okay, so.
Motion passes.
All right, so it's Michael, it was Dan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And we're back to period of public discretion?
Wait, you didn't do your business. You skipped your business.
Oh, oh, gosh, yeah.
Do you want to, do you want to, um?
That's going in executive session.
Yeah, do you want to do the notary policy first?
Yes, yes.
Then go into executive session, then go back and wait that motion? For employees' notice, okay. So the notary policy is pretty self-explanatory. Um.
Although I did get confused now, I understand the difference between in-person and electronic.
So electronic notary is now a a thing you can do. Um, we are not doing electronic notary because actually if you read the rules, it's kind of convoluted and not right, like that just use somebody else's, your electric notary, please, uh, electronic notary. So basically, um, I mean, it is what it is. Once this is approved, I will call our insurance agent. You do have to have notary insurance. And then we also, um, Wanda, did you ever receive your certificate in the mail?
I did.
Okay.
I think Catherine did too.
So we have to order um, stamps and journals. Um, so hopefully we'll have this.
So it's the two that so far that are.
Yeah, and then the other person is me and I haven't taken.
Wait, I I, whoa, I'm confused here. What, I thought Sue Simpson works upstairs. What's her name?
Sue Mullin?
Sue Mullin, she's not?
The only two people who took the notary um, course and, or the three people who took the notary course and exam.
Okay.
Were Wanda, myself and Catherine.
Oh, okay.
And that actually covers us almost every hour we're.
I'm also a notary if anybody ever needs anything.
Do you take that?
Uh, actually, the Suffolk Community Library System had somebody come in from Suffolk Community College who teaches it um, like once a year and it's like the class that fills up the fastest. So, you know, the ultimate goal is to have all of the librarians um, do notaries. Um, and as as for the policy, the reason um, Um, and as, as for the policy, the reason, um, we have it as the librarians as the notaries is the librarian position is a professional position. And they are, um, they, they have fewer transactions. Um, and so it's just, it's easier to have it um, as, as the librarian.
Was it two-year, three-year, nonsense?
I have to study, because I don't remember off the top of my head, but.
Oh, you missed that correct question on the plan I was saying.
I, I do have a question, because I have a personal experience up until today. All those that is not available, um, uh, power of attorney especially, I've found that that's very hard to get in order with that.
Mm-hmm.
And what is, uh, that threshold there? To get that, or you just choose not to do it? I, I, my sister's in town and I have to get a power of attorney for her.
Oh.
And I finally found UPS in South Am and Doug's do it after.
We can do that, can you do?
Yeah.
Well, she's going over there tomorrow. She has to get back home. Um, but I was shot down by so many people and was wondering why.
You know, most libraries don't, don't do a lot of that stuff and I'm not sure.
Could be an inability in there?
Yeah, you know, that's, that's where you get into a.
I mean, the other thing is there's, there's certain things that as a notary, like.
You do not.
You can't do, or you don't want to do, or, um.
That's where most of the problems come up, yeah. Cause people that, right, because then they say, oh, now I can change your account information, your beneficiary information, things of that nature. And it's an involved form too. They keep on changing it.
Is other languages initiative? I see we're only doing it in English.
It is. Um, so we can't notarize something if we don't know what it is, right? Because if it's in, um, Russian, um, and I'm just picking the language, you know, I, I don't speak, um. I don't know if, if it's a will or a trust or, you know, power of attorney or any of that, so.
Wow.
It, it seems to me pretty straightforward.
Yeah. And it's, it's basically the same policy as Rogers Memorial and Montauk, because we all share a lawyer, so.
Yeah.
So I, I personally, if we need to notarize something.
Two of us are currently, will currently do it once we have the samples and the insurance on place. And then I will study and evaluate.
Wanda, charging a fee?
No, they love doing the power of attorney.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they, it's, you know, as long as they get the requisite proof, they have a protocol that they have to follow, you know, that they prove.
I bet it ironic whole place, the UPS floor, which is, yeah, yeah, it's.
Well, maybe it's because they have the capacity to have whatever.
They're in, in, sure, yeah, they have, like, they have the protocol for UPS.
Yeah.
You know, but they wind up getting into trouble, you know, sometimes, you know, with that, you know.
Okay.
So we need to vote.
Oh, we have to vote again.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the notary policy in a second.
Oh, four?
Aye.
Aye, against.
Do you wanna do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, back to period of public expression. Now you got a second shot at us.
Oh, can I ask, who's, who's the library's accountant?
Our accountant is, um, we use, uh, Val, sorry, Alcofter, it's the fellow name, Alcofter.
Yeah, I know.
You know Al?
Okay, so now we have to go into executive session.
I made a motion to go into executive session at six fifty-five.
I'll second him.
Okay, um, and, so, what? And we are going into executive session. You have to give a reason to discuss the employment history of a particular person or persons.
Okay.
So we are back in public session. The motion was made to return public session at seven oh eight by Dan Glass, seconded by Elliot and unanimous. Um, so now.
So now we need a motion to approve the employee salary increases that we discussed in executive session.
My movement, we approve the salary increases that we discussed in executive session. I second.
Oh, four?
Aye.
Aye, against. Motion passes.
Alright, and then we have Dan's favorite motion.
Make a motion to ensure the, against seven, ten?
Okay, I'll second that.
I agree.
Four?
Five.
Aye.
Okay.
Alright, thank you everyone.